Good evening. Welcome to the December 18th, 2013 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. At this time, I'd like to ask you to take a look at your cellphones and make sure they're either on mute or off, if you would please, and please stand and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Applications heard during tonight's meeting will be voted on by the Planning and Zoning Commission during the meeting tonight. The Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendations on these applications will then be submitted to the St. Charles County Council for their final determination on the items. The individual items or bills will be introduced at the Monday, January 13th, 2014 County Council meeting. All right, I see we have a quorum. Will someone move that we open the meeting?
I will.
And a second, all in favor? Aye. The following documents are introduced as a matter of record for the public hearing and regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Unified Development Ordinance of St. Charles County, including zoning maps, and the Year 2025 Master Plan for St. Charles County, which includes the Year 2025 Future Land Use Plan map. Just for a little roadmap for the evening, we will, I will read each application into the record. We will then ask staff for their analysis and recommendation. Then the applicant will come forward, if they so choose, and explain what's going on and answer any questions that the commission may have of them. After the applicant comes forward, then we will then open it up for the public, where anybody in the room that wishes to speak on that particular application may do so. Please limit your remarks to three minutes, and then, and if you do speak, we have the speaker cards up here at the front, make sure Ms. Figury over here has a record of your speaking. After the public portion of the meeting, we will bring it back before the commission, we will discuss it openly, and then make our, make a vote on our recommendation, which then go on to the county council for their final determination in their January meeting. All right, the first application is 21007. This one was continued from last meeting, so first I need a motion to bring this back up from the table.
Will we plant two, the commission?
No, second.
All right, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? It's brought up back from the, from the table. Application 21007 by Brad Goss, applicant/representative, Pickett Race and Silver Incorporated Engineer, The Crest Over Katy Trail Land Properties LLC owner/developer. The application requests an amendment to the Cluster Development Plan for the preliminary plat of the Crest Over Katy Trail. The property is zoned R1A, single-family residential district, one acre minimum lot size. The property consists of 31 lots located on the southern terminus of Napa Lane. Steph?
Thank you. I have a statement, Steph. We believe the UDO can reasonably be read to require sidewalks along Napa View Court, I'm sorry, they are requesting that the plan be updated to remove this requirement for sidewalks that was on the original cluster plan that we had approved, sorry. And from a public policy standpoint, we have requested the walks remain as part of this development. However, we will agree with the applicant that there are inconsistencies between Section 410.330.D and Exhibit A of the Unified Development Ordinance. Therefore, the Unified Development Ordinance policy is not stated clearly, given inconsistent provisions of the UDO. Under these circumstances, we make no recommendation either for or against the amendment to the preliminary plat, also known as the Cluster Development Plan. If approving the amendment, amended plan, the Planning and Zoning Commission should note that its approval is according to criteria set forth in Section 405.090I4B1-9.
Thank you. Any letters?
We did receive letters from, sorry. We had a petition in support with 26 signatures, a letter from Councilman Joe Cronin, and a letter from Brad Goss, and a letter from Brad Goss, I hand it out to you.
Yes, thank you.
I'm sorry, Kevin.
Any, any questions for staff? All right, is the applicant here? All right. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, can you state your name and address for our record?
Brad Goss, 1495 Fairgrounds Road, St. Charles, Missouri, 63301.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Brad Goss, I am representing the applicant in connection with this request for an amendment to the preliminary plan and cluster plan for the Crest Over Katy Trail. I also am representing really all of the owners in the Crest Over Katy Trail. Literally every owner in the subdivision signed the petition requesting that this be approved. The street in the Crest Over Katy Trail, Napa View Lane, which is shown on the cluster plan, is a single street, ends in a cul-de-sac, it's a dead end. The community is gated. I've given you pictures of the street, of the gate at the entrance to the community, and the gate that's at the other end of the street, such that literally the only cars and folks who are on this street are owners of property and their guests in the Crest Over Katy Trail. This street is a private street, it is maintained and paid for by the owners in that subdivision. The same is true with the sidewalk. And these lots were developed as a cluster home development. Some of the members of the commission, I am sure, remember that. This started off as a normal, single-family development. The developer failed, Cross Homes came in, took it over, and turned it into a cluster home development, and just changed the concept entirely, so they became a gated community for essentially empty nesters. And the homes that are being built in this community range from a half million dollars over, to over a million dollars in, in cost. When they changed the lots to cluster home development, the front yard setbacks on those lots became a 20-foot front yard setback, so they're a little, they're set closer to the street, and part of the reason for that is because you've got a cliff behind probably half of these lots, so they had to pull them up. When you look at those lots, and the pictures, I think of the homes, I gave you pictures of the display homes, illustrate this, you really don't have any room for a sidewalk. If you put the sidewalk in from the setback in these front yards, their front yard's going to look like a sidewalk. And so, these homeowners don't want that. They aren't going to use it, and they're going to have to pay to maintain it, and they look at it and they say, this is just going to devalue our property. And so unanimously, they have respectfully requested that this requirement be eliminated from the preliminary plan. And the whole back and forth about, does the UDO require this, not require this, is really so much legal razzmatazz. At the end of the day, the UDO doesn't require it, whether it does or it doesn't, these are the residents who live there, and they're requesting that not be imposed upon them. So be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for the applicant? Joe?
I see from the photos, there's sidewalks on one side of the entrance, on, on several, couple of the pictures, I guess. Okay. Is, I mean, those sidewalks just going to stub out?
Yep.
Or do you have plans maybe, or is a possible alternative, is having sidewalks on one side of the street, not the other?
No, what the plan calls for is a sidewalk on one side of the street.
Okay.
And that's the relief that's being requested. The only place you could put the sidewalk is on the, in front of the homes that I gave you pictures of, because the other side of the street is a retaining wall that's about 25 feet high, because that's the way the subdivision was developed. It's a single-loaded street, so there is no plan to add any other sidewalk or to extend the sidewalk.
So the existing ones that we're seeing going through the gates are just, just going to stop somewhere?
That sidewalk is there, and that will remain.
Okay.
Otherwise, there is no intention to extend the sidewalk in any way, shape, or fashion, and no, no one would use it. That's the point of this. The residents who live in that subdivision, every one of them are requesting that this not be imposed on them.
What percentage of that subdivision is built out, and what percentage?
All of it, except for a couple of lots which are under construction.
Okay.
And so, in those cases, the builder signed that, for those lots, because they're technically the owner, but their customers are aware of it and they support it.
I'm curious, why weren't these sub sidewalks put in when these homes were being built? Is there a reason?
Because you typically will put it in afterwards, but in any case, as this went along, originally this is put on the plan, is really an anomaly. As I said before you got here, the development was originally developed as a normal, single-family subdivision, so the sidewalk is shown on the plan, just as a matter of course, because in that configuration with a public street, you would have that sidewalk. And it just carried over, and it was really an oversight in that regard.
Because by looking at the maturity of the shrubbery and stuff, it looks like this subdivision's, where I'm seeing these sidewalks, it looks like they've been there a while.
Cross puts in mature landscaping, that's one of the things Cross is known for. When they put in trees, they'll put in trees that are 14 feet high. They have a contractor, a landscaping contractor, who harvests those trees from down south, he brings them up here, he puts in irrigation system, and so that what he, what the folks who are buying into a subdivision like this get is really finished landscaping and a finished appearance, it's just part of the project.
Well, how old are the majority of these houses that are in here? I mean, what's the oldest one, would you say? 10 years?
Oh heavens, no. Perhaps four years?
Okay.
Maybe?
I mean, I'm-
About four years, it's about four years.
Yeah, because we were talking about the development probably in 2006, '07.
Yeah, and nothing happened for a while, and then I think the development was in 2010, 2011, so maybe three years.
And I'm kind of just, I'm just befuddled by this a little bit. I have a son that's building a new home in a subdivision of Wentzville. They poured the sidewalk same time they poured the driveways this week. Is that something, I mean, would a county normally let a house go in and be there for four years before they require the sidewalk to be poured?
No, generally not.
Okay.
Generally, the sidewalk, yeah, it is put in by the builder at, at the end of, of the time that the builder's in the subdivision. These weren't put in, it wasn't picked up by the building inspectors, and so we ended up with a number of houses constructed without sidewalks there. And the slope of the driveways didn't take into account for future sidewalks, things of that nature.
So it slipped through the cracks, kind of?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you. We will now open it up to the, the public. Anybody that wishes to speak on this application may do so.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'm Judge Dan, I'm sorry.
Can you raise your right hand for us?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, so help you God?
So help me God.
All right.
I normally do that to people.
I know.
I'm not used to that.
You're used to saying it, right? All right, state your name and address for our record, please.
My name's Dan Pellic, and I live at 4308 Napa View Lane, that's Lot 26 on the very far right. I'm a judge in St. Charles County, I'm here not in that capacity, I'm here as a homeowner in the subdivision. And I'm the former county councillor for St. Charles County, and thank you all for taking the time to hear me tonight, I'll keep it brief. Thank you, Jan and Bob, for all your hard work on this. I've reviewed Brad's legal conclusions on this, I'm in total agreement. This isn't a case where this slipped through the cracks, I, this is a case where it just doesn't apply, given the legalities of this exact plat, this subdivision, so this is not a case where we would need a variance or go to the Board of Adjustment, it just doesn't apply, and I think Harold Ellis even said that staff wasn't going to take a position for or against, because this is sort of an exception to the normal rule, based on the way this went through foreclosure and the way this was platted. This one does fall through the cracks legally, and so I think that's why the county's taken the position. I am one of the many homeowners in this subdivision. The home that's four years old was there, I think, as, as a single, they originally were built by Sun, by the bank, as display homes, I think there were one or two of them. The first one, the first one or two were sold, and then they sat. I was in, my wife and I moved in in May, and it was less than 50% built out in May. And Payne built them very fast down below, and there's one lot, there's two lots left under construction right now, and that's it, the one is sold, and that homeowner's in agreement. But all of us are unanimously in agreement that, that we don't want sidewalks in here. If there was a sidewalk to go in the front of my house, it would literally take half my lot, because all of us on the bluff are cut off by, by the bluff itself. So we had to build closer to the street. It would be a hardship on all of us, although this isn't a hardship case, it's a legal case, that's why it's in front of all of you. And we would really appreciate you approving this on behalf of all the homeowners in the subdivision. And again, I'm speaking on my private behalf, not as a judge or former county councillor. So any questions to me, folks? Thank you for your time tonight, I really appreciate it.
All right, is there anybody else in the room, room that wishes to speak on this? All right, seeing none, we will close the public portion of it and bring it back before the commission. Any comments? Mr. Joe?
I asked for this when this came up the last time. Bob, if we, if these folks don't want sidewalks, I'd certainly like to, to abide by their wishes, but are we setting any type of legal precedent by allowing this subdivision to go in without sidewalks, and then requiring other subdivisions in the county to have sidewalks?
No, not in the sense of, you know, what are your judges thinking of legal precedent? That you can be bombed by, no you're not.
Okay, thank you.
Anything, anything else?
Make a motion to vote.
There was a motion on the, on the table, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Leonard, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Ms. Polly?
Yes.
Mr. Setely?
Yes.
Mr. Cronin?
Yes.
I vote yes. And Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
All right. The motion is approved, 7-2, 7-2-0. The next application on the, on the agenda, it's application number 21275, by Sean Nicolids, applicant/representative, Michael M. and Joanie D. Nicolids, owner. The application requests a rezoning change from A, agricultural district, five acres minimum lot size, to RR, single-family residential district, three acres minimum lot size. The property, known as 1442 Highway N, is located on the southeast side of Highway N, approximately 2,000 feet southwest of South Point Prairie Road. The property consists of 6.9 acres and is located within Council District 2. Steph?
Thank you. Area land uses include single-family residential to the north, east, and west, agricultural to the south, and the zoning on the adjacent properties is all A agricultural. The 2025 land, land use plan shows the future development as low-density residential, which is one to four units per acre. The RR zoning is set to divide the property to construct a second residence on the property, there's over six acres on the site, so they'd like the three-acre zoning to split the property. There are 15 three-to-five acre properties that were developed between 1973 and 2006, within 1,000 feet of the subject site. In 2007, RR zoning was approved at the Klausa State Subdivision, that's approximately 900 feet to the west of this, of the site. Based on these considerations in the 2025 land use plan, Steph does recommend approval. We did receive a letter from Mo Dot and a letter of support from Kay Asher. Any questions of staff? Thanks.
Thank you. Is the applicant here? Can you raise your right hand for us? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, can you state your name and address for our record, please?
Yes, sir. My name is Richard Musler, M-U-S-L-E-R. I'm with Musler Engineering Company, and our address is 32 Port West Court in St. Charles, Missouri.
All right, good.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'll speak briefly about application 21275. I'd first like to let the commission know that the present property owner, Mike and Joanie Nichols, are also here with me this evening, along with the applicant, Mr. Sean Nichols, and Sean is here with his wife, Megan, and then lastly, their real estate advisor, Mr. Bill Littenhouse, also joins us. This, this particular property is presently situated in the A agricultural district, we're asking that it be transferred to the RR, single-family residential district. Mr. and Mrs. Mike Nichols would like to gift part of their 6.79 acre property to Sean and Megan, so that Sean and Megan can build their new home. And I brought along a display board for, for you to at least look at. This depicts the property that they own, depicts how they proposed to split the lot, and depicts the location of the new custom home that Sean and Megan would build. Now, the A agricultural district has a minimum lot size of five acres, the Nichols own 6.79 acres, so subdivision of their property is not allowed under the present zoning category. If it would be transferred to the RR, single-family residential district, then the property can be split as shown on the concept plan, and Sean and Megan can proceed with their building plan. So the, the rezoning that is requested is so that it can be subdivided. It's a means to an end for Sean and Megan to build their new home. As Jan has indicated, we will, would make the supposition that the proposed zoning change and the subsequent lot split is consistent with the county's future land use plan, and is consistent with the surrounding land uses in this area. With that brief explanation, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, and then if I can't answer them, I'll call upon one of the Nichols.
Any questions for the applicant? All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We will now open this up to the, the public, where anybody in the room that wishes to speak on this may, may come forward and do so. Anybody? All right, seeing none, we will close the public hearing and then bring it before the commission. Any thoughts, discussions, comments?
I would make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
There was a motion, and a second. Ms. Polly, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Setely?
Yes.
Mr. Cronin?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
All right, the application is approved, 7-2-0. The, the last application on the, on the agenda this evening, it's application 21276, by Bill Littenhouse, CAPB LLC applicant/representative, Michael P. McGinnis, owner. The applicant requests a rezoning change from R1A, single-family residential district, one acre minimum lot size, to RR, C, single-family residential district, 15,000 square foot, feet minimum lot size. The property, known as 1357, 1361, and 1365 Valley Lane, is, are located on the west side of Valley Lane, approximately 1,200 feet north of Highway N. The property consists of 2.65 acres and is located within Council District 3. Steph?
All right, thank you. The area zoning would be R1A to the north, south, and east, and to the west, the property is zoned R1A, R1A in the city of Coderville. The 2025 land use plan does show the property to be developed as single-family residential, I'm sorry, low-density residential, one to four units per acre. And area land uses include single-family residential to the north, south, and east, and Francis House Central High School is to the west of the property. 26 of the 36 lots or parcels on Valley Lane are all less than one acre in size, having been split prior to 1973, when we enacted the R1A zoning on the site. Prior to '73, the A agricultural district required 18,000 square foot minimum lot size, and the other lots in the subdivision were split back at that time. The, one other subdivision I want to note to the east, further east, is the Brittany Place subdivision in the city of Coderville, and that was developed with lots as small as 5,300 square feet. Steph is recommending approval of the zoning change based on the considerations I mentioned, and the lot sizes are consistent with the 2025 land use plan. And we've received no letters. Any questions of staff? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is the applicant here? It's a good thing to get the boards mixed up. You've been sworn in, so you may go ahead and proceed.
Mr. Chairman, again, my name is Rich Musler. I'm an engineer with Musler Engineering Company at 32 Port West Court in St. Charles. Joining me this evening concerning application 21276 is Mr. Bill Littenhouse. Bill is a, under contract to purchase these three lots, known as 1357, 1361, and 1365 Valley Lane, and Bill is the applicant in the rezoning question before you this evening. We're asking that this property be rezoned, it's presently in the R1A, single-family residential district, we'd like to transfer it to the RR, C residential category. These three lots are presently 200 feet wide and 194 feet deep, each one of those three is exactly the same dimension. They front on Valley Lane, Valley Lane is a county road, has a 50-foot wide right-of-way. Mr. Littenhouse would like to divide each of those lots in half, so that there would be six lots total, each lot would be 100 foot wide, and still be the 194 feet deep. Consequently, each lot, if subdivided, would be 19,407 square feet in area, upon which would be built six new homes. I brought along for you to see here this evening a preliminary plat for this subdivision. We have filed this plat with the county planning division, scheduled to be on your agenda next month, and that's assuming this rezoning proceeds in an orderly fashion with the county council. Like the, like the previous application, the rezoning is a means to an end, that end being the proposal to subdivide. The R1A, single-family district, has a minimum lot size of one acre. One acre would prohibit subdividing this property. One acre would prohibit subdividing this property. If it's transferred to the R1C Single Family Residential District, that minimum lot size is 15,000 square feet, and the proposed subdivision could proceed. As Jan has indicated, the proposed zoning change and subsequent re-subdivision is consistent with the county's future land use plan. And we make the supposition that it's also consistent with the Valley Lane neighborhood. Now, I'd like to, if I could, show you another board. And this is the county assessor map that I pieced together and kind of blew up so that you all could see it. First of all, please know that Valley Acres subdivision was planted back in 1958. And at that time, all of the lots had 194 feet in property depth. They all fronted on Valley Lane, and they all had the same depth, whether they were on the right or left-hand side of the road. In Valley Acres Plat 1, they, for the most part, were platted at 200 foot wide, which is exactly what the subject property is. They're 200-foot wide lots. Now, it's a little hard to see, but if you go by what I have drawn and read there, I would call your attention to original Lot 4 was split in half, each half being 100 foot wide, the exact same lot size that we are proposing by the preliminary plat. Please note that Lot 3, original Lot 3, was split in half. Each lot, 100 feet wide. Lot 5 was split in half. Lot 6 was split in half. Lot 8 was not split, but was originally planted at 100 foot wide. Lot 14 was split in half. Lot 16 was split in half. Lot 17 was split in half, all being 100 feet wide on the splits. Lot 21 was originally planted as 100 foot wide and 194 feet deep. Lot 23, originally planted as 100 foot wide. Lot 25, originally planted as 100 foot wide. There's four lots in the subdivision that I can't find a plat for. I guess there was no plat. Those four lots are either 100 foot wide or 112 feet wide. So the emerging pattern in Valley Lane has been to lot split and create lots that are 100 foot wide by 194 feet deep. They are all non-conforming uses in the R1A zoning category. And we would like to join the neighbors in that prevailing pattern. But for us to do so under the current standards, we'll have to first rezone to R1C. That's the little bit longer drawn-out explanation that I can give you, and would be happy to answer questions. Our call upon Bill.
Yeah. I have a question. How many other undeveloped lots besides these subject lots on the development?
I believe there's one other vacant lot.
And what size is that? Is that the 100 or 200? That 194?
That is this lot.
Okay.
It's original Lot 8. It's 100 foot wide.
Is it developed? Is it developed? We're going to actually build the homes on it or just sell them as lots? Are they going to be developed by one builder?
No, I'm not going to.
Develop?
I'm going to mark the lot.
Okay.
I've got several builders who are interested. Interesting thing, in the presentation, 1958, the minimum restriction house, 800 square foot. We're going to build much larger, 800 square foot. I need to be sworn in.
Yeah.
I'll wait. Any more questions on that, Diane?
That's it?
Thank you.
Any other questions for Musler? All right. Thank you. We'll now open this up to the public. So if there's anybody in the room that wishes to speak on this, please come forward. Can you raise your right hand for us? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
Yep.
Can you state your name and address for our record, please?
My name's Steve Oliver, and the address is 1328 Valley Lane. And we're just here to let you all know that we are opposed to this. As he said, originally, they were all acre lots, and they were split into half-acre lots. So now he's coming up wanting 1,500 square foot, which is barely a third of an acre of a lot. So that's going to, all the houses going down the road is all going to be on half acres, except for his, which is 1,500, or 15,000 square foot is what he's opposing, which is, like I said, barely over a third of an acre. It's going to, the subdivision has been there for 50-some years, 60. So why, all of a sudden now, do they want to change what has been going on for 50 years like that if he can't just abide by what we've always been there? You know, we're an old subdivision. We're not one of these new subdivisions that, you know, a bunch of cluster homes is coming in. And that's what he's proposing to do. Put more houses in the space that is available. And I don't, we didn't know if we had to get a petition, what we got to do. We're just homeowners out there, is all we are. And we're just here to let yous know that we are opposed to it. We wouldn't be opposed to being half-acre lots, where he could get five houses on the 2.6 acre. But we are opposed for him to try to be getting six or seven houses, whatever he's trying to get on there, you know, not by the regular half-acre lot size. And that's all I got to.
Any questions? All right. Thank you.
I'm Deborah Oliver.
Can you raise your right hand for us?
I'm Deborah Oliver.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
I sure do.
Name and address for our record, please.
Thank you. 1328 Valley Lane. We're not even a subdivision. We're just a dead-end street. And we've been there forever. So, you know, I mean, we don't oppose something new. But if you go putting in a bunch of homes all in this one little section, it's just going to, to us, that's all we've got going, is we have these nice half-acre, one-acre lots. We have a home that is 1,300 square foot, not 800 square foot. We do realize there are some on the street that are smaller homes. They were all individually built. Some are, I have one next to me that is a newer home. That lot was split off. We're just concerned with, like, they want to rezone, and, but yet, no one's even committed to who's going to be the builder. So we have no idea what's going in there. The fire truck can't even turn around on our street. It has to pull down and back, all the way out. The guys walk the fire truck out. I mean, we're not even a subdivision. So this is new to us, and we have a lot of elderly people on the street. So the ones I had talked to just couldn't make it tonight. So thank you. Any questions?
All right.
It's not my thing.
All right. Continuing on, is there anybody else in the room that wishes to speak on this? Can you raise your right hand for us? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
I do.
Okay. Can you state your name and address for our record, please?
George Popple, P-O-P-L-E, 1354 Valley Lane.
All right. Go ahead.
I couldn't hear too well about how the engineer described all this. But in reading the paper sent to us by the commission, it appeared that they would like to rezone the acre plots that remain open into 15,000-foot plots. I have no objection to the 15,000 plots for most subdivisions. But for Valley Acres, the depth of those lots contribute to the full acre. And they are approximately 200 feet to 212 feet in depth. Now, this depth can't be changed to get their 15,000 square feet. Only the frontage would be changed. The frontage then gets knocked down to something like 70 feet from 100. What happens to the two-car driveways that we presently have in the subdivision? If they're depleted by 30-foot frontage, that takes care of the second driveway and also eliminates any campers and work vehicles and travel trailers and what have you that are now parked throughout the subdivision and not requiring any use of the road to park these vehicles. Now, if you rezone this, you're going to take away that 30-foot of each one in width, frontage. This is an impossible situation. And the ratio of depth to frontage is very poor for residential construction. In fact, I don't, I don't think any city planner or engineer would attempt to use this type of land for any residential. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Is there anybody else in the room that wishes to speak? Can you raise your right hand for us? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
Yes, I do, sir.
Okay. Can you state your name and address for our record?
Anita Jansen at 1337 Valley Lane.
Go ahead.
I oppose of it because we all have one-half acres. And to divide this, the front would be so small that they put seven homes in there on them six acres. And I just think it would be, they couldn't have decent yards like we've got. And that's why I oppose it. That's all.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the room that wishes to speak on this application? Okay. Yeah. All right. Can you raise your right hand for us? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you God?
Yes, I do.
All right. Can you state your name and address for our record, please?
My name is Michael McGinnis. I live at 1243 Beaver Creek Road, Chesterfield, Missouri. And last year, I inherited the land in question from my mother when she passed away. And I'm a little confused. The first gentleman mentioned 2.6 acres. When my father bought that, when my parents bought that in 1958, they bought three one-acre lots. So I'm not sure where, maybe the engineer over here can explain where the 2.6 acres comes from. Also, I'd like to say that when my parents bought that land, it was all one-acre lots. And my father was very surprised several years later when all of a sudden people started building houses on half acres. He didn't know how that happened, but it was too late to do anything about it then. And I would just like, you know, to have the same opportunity to have this land divided that other people have had. That's all I had to say. If anybody else has, did any of you have any questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Is there anyone else?
That's what we're not sure, you know.
Yeah. Well, we'll make sure that when he comes back up. Right. Yeah. All right. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this? Okay. Finish up here.
Okay. Let me try to explain it if I can. When Valley Lane was developed, these lots were originally one acre, one-acre lots. And those lots went to the center line of the road. Their lot depth was 212 feet, 212 point something feet. The lots that are the subject of the rezoning tonight are those exact same older lots. They're 212 feet to the center line of the road. I have subtracted from their lot size, half of Valley Lane, half of the Valley Lane right-of-way. Valley Lane is a 50-foot wide right-of-way. I've subtracted 25 feet and have described these lots to you as being 194 feet deep. That is from the right-of-way line, not from the center line. So if we want to consider them being, if we want to consider their lot size to go to the center line, then we have three one-acre lots, as Mr. McGinnis described. That's what he thought his parents had purchased, three one-acre lots. Well, they did, to the center line of the road. The proposed subdivision, if you subtract the right-of-way, which I have done, and by the way, I'm required to do that by the county. It's not that I did that voluntarily. That's a requirement, that I must subtract the right-of-way. Then these are no longer one-acre lots. They're smaller. When we split them in half and make them 100 foot wide each to the center line of the road, they're half-acre lots. But to the right-of-way line, they are 19,407 square feet. They are not 70-foot wide lots. They are not 15,000-square-foot lots. They are 100-foot wide lots, and they are 19,407 square feet in lot area. Now, that number's important because R1B, as in boy, requires 20,000 square feet in lot area. I'm like 600 feet short of the R1B criteria. That is why R1C was requested. It's the next step down in the county's hierarchy of single-family zoning. But there is no attempt to develop 15,000-square-foot lots. There is no attempt to develop 70-foot wide lots. We are proposing 100-foot wide lots. They would be 212 to the center line. They would be a half an acre if you count them to the center line. These proposed lots are exactly the same size as Mr. and Mrs. Oliver's lot and Mrs. Jackson's lot. They're exactly the same as what those folks own. Mr. Popple owns a larger lot. He owns a 200-foot wide lot. He has never split his lot like almost everybody else has in the project. So I think the confusion here is over R1C and the minimum lot size and how you count that area. If you calc it to the center line, as all these folks envision it should be count, then they are half-acre lots.
Mr. Cronin?
I think there's a lot of confusion going. I did, I don't have a calculator, but I still know how to do math longhand. And if you put six homes on 2.65 acres, you end up with .44 acres per lot. And you're right, those were probably half-acre lots years back, and they went to the center line. line. The other thing would be is, those aren't 70-foot lots. Those are gonna be, lots are gonna be 100-foot. You'd said that earlier, correct?
Yeah. And Mr. Cronin, these folks have not had the benefit of seeing the preliminary plat. We filed it with the county yesterday, so they haven't seen this. And perhaps if they had seen this, and we can show it to them tonight, you know, they would maybe have as a picture that these lots are just like most of the lots along Valley Lane.
The lots are really .44 acres, 'cause they're doing six of them. And then additionally, they're the same basic size, they're 100 foot wide as most, many of the other lots in your area, because the fact that the county requires it to be, to be measured from the edge of the right-of-way. So essentially, they're half-acre lots with a hunk of street taken out of them, and they turn out to be .44 acres, okay? Additionally, I just like to tell you folks, I'm very familiar with the builders that Mr. Lickenhouse usually has, and I can tell you there'll be very nice homes in your neighborhood, okay? Mr. Lickenhouse has got a pretty good reputation with the builders that he sells to that keep up neighborhoods up, and I venture to say there'll be some of the nicest neighborhoods, homes in the area, so. I wanna, I wanna rest your, you know, I just wanna tell you what I know about it and the dimensions.
What we can go by was the...
I understand.
...percent, saying 2.65 plus 15,000.
They don't add up.
And, you know, the numbers don't add up. Everybody was, if it was, you know, if they divide them into half-acre lots, everybody's, because that's what it is, you know, and nobody would be opposed to that.
Right.
But if you use the math, 15,000 into 43, what's the...
No, no, it's confusing.
Well, that's, that's what the zoning calls for, but they're really proposing lots that are larger than that.
Right. The zoning says 15,000 square foot minimum, so it's 15,000 or hot, or more lot size. And he would like to get close to 20,000, is what they're saying, but they're just a little short of that 20,000 required for that next, the next highest.
Where he sells these lots though, so they can't come in and squeeze them back down.
And it'd be a stipulation that they do have to have a 100-foot road frontage to them?
That would be drastic.
That would keep them from...
You could hardly do that.
If, if I may, we cannot condition a rezoning. However, the plat is coming in, and, and part of the things that we look for in a re-subdivision plat is that the lots, when they re-subdivide them, that they are in keeping with the other lots in the subdivision. So, so we as staff are gonna be looking at the plat relative to the fact that the lots are the same size as other things in, in the neighborhood. And we've already looked at the, we've already looked at the plat, I mean, I started reviewing it today.
Yeah.
And, and it does meet those, the lots are proposed to be exactly the same size as you guys' lots.
They've got, yeah, the applicants have to come at a subsequent meeting and present their plat, as they're going to at next month's meeting. If they came, if they, if they say something in one meeting, and then they show up with a completely different plat the next meeting, they're gonna have to answer to us for telling us one thing and presenting us with something different. They're answerable several times throughout an entire, throughout the entire process of this, they're answerable to the commission and to planning.
Like I said, these are the last three lots in the subdivision, and for them to be smaller than any of the rest of them would totally...
And we're not proposing.
That's not the proposal.
And Mr. Chairman, it's important for these folks to know that a plat can die at this commission just as easily as it can be approved. And, you know, we, we filed that plat in as timely fashion as we could. Unfortunately, the county wouldn't accept it a month ago. But we filed it for record yesterday. Jan's group will review it, and you folks will decide whether it's in keeping with the neighborhood or not. We make the supposition it is. They're half-acre lots, if you go to the center line, like everybody else.
Any other, any other questions to the applicant?
One question for you.
Yes, sir.
How many of these half-acre plots now will you have?
Six.
Six is all?
Yes. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you guide?
Yes, I do.
Can you state your name and address for our record?
Bill Littenhouse, Littenhouse Properties, and 410 Cresview Drive. Okay, first of all, I think the appropriate thing being, I'm gonna tell everybody here tonight that's opposed. Thank you for coming out. I really should've had a neighborhood meeting, that would've solved all the problems. But I assumed, since I was doing the exact same thing as across the street, when you figure in the right-of-way to the center road, that there'd be no opposition. So, it's my fault I didn't have a meeting. A lot of times I do meet with people all the time. So I apologize for not meeting with you. But, you know, one thing I wanted to point out, it's a beautiful neighborhood. I would not, I went out there, after I put on a contract, drove down the street. It looked like our Norman Rockwell picture with all the leaves falling, they were all beautiful. I'm excited about the project. Certainly, I'm not gonna find anybody who builds an 800-square-foot house, 'cause that's allowed in that subdivision with one bathroom and one bedroom, I believe the restrictions say, back in 1958. We'll do something, first of all, since 58 till today, building prices have gone way, way up. The houses are gonna cost more than they would've been to build back then. So there'll be something decent. Beautiful area, and the lots to the east, it was mentioned in the staff report, Brittany Place, were four times larger than Brittany Place. If you go to the south, I'm not gonna allow those doors, too. Those were double those size across the street. So, and there's a school on the other side. So, it's a beautiful neighborhood. We're gonna, we're not gonna do anything to change that. Be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right. If there's anybody else? All right. Seeing none, we'll bring you back before the commission. Any discussion, comments?
I think we sorted it out already.
I think so. So, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Mr. Sattely, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Mr. Cronin, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Griffin, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Ms. Polly?
Yes.
The motion is approved, 7-2-0. All right. That ends the applications. The only other business on our agenda this evening is the approval of the minutes from November 12th meeting. Is there a comment? There's been a motion to approve, is there a second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Just a note on our agenda, there are officer elections to be held in January at our next meeting. Any other, any other issues that need to be brought before the commission? Mr. Cronin?
First of all, I'd like to, to ask Mr. Sean Nichols something, okay? I hope he takes real good care of Mom and Pop's driveway when it snows, okay? And it's really nice to see all four of you here, okay?
Thank you.
Okay?
Fifth member of that.
If I could, I apologize for being late. As I was walking out the door, my son came home from college, I hadn't seen him for a while, and I had to talk to him. And then I took a tumble down the courthouse stairs, so I hope Mr. Elman's got good insurance. Bob can check into that, okay? For me. But I just wanted to tell you folks, this will be my last meeting with you all. I enjoyed working with you for most of this last two years, and I really appreciate the efforts that you've put into this job, okay? I appreciate them so much that I talked to Mr. Elin and Mr. Sattely about what you folks were getting paid, because I don't think that you are being paid adequately for how much you all work, okay? So...
You guys are getting paid?
Based on their recommendations, I did a little digging, and you, and there's not been a pay increase for this, for this plan and zoning commission since the charter was formed back in the early 90s, okay? So based on Mr. Elins and Mr. Sattely, on Monday night, the council approved you all the raise, okay? So after you pay for your, your gas to drive here now, you might be making a smidge over minimum wage, okay? And council members like myself don't get paid for coming here, so the new fellow that'll be coming in, I think he needs to get paid, but we can't get that done. And he's Dave Hammond, and he is hopefully, assuming the council will approve him, he's a former building director of the county, he'll do a very, very good job. He's real excited about doing it, 'cause he's retired county, and he's, he's wanting to come back. But I do want to tell you that I appreciated working with you quite a bit. And there's one small thing in St. Charles County. We have a balanced budget, and we're really financially conservative, and Mr. Elin and Mr. Sattely know this. So there is another change. If you don't show up for the meeting, you don't get paid, okay? But when you do show up for the meeting, you're gonna get paid about twice what you're getting paid now, okay?
Thank you very much, Mr. Cronin.
That's okay. And it was nice, it was nice working with you all, I enjoyed it. A lot of people here don't realize that these packs take a lot of time to read, and these folks have to, you know, suit up, read the package before the meetings, come here, and do all the work, and for a little pay, 'cause they're all good people. And I think the questions they ask, one of the two years I've been here, are real prudent to the point, and it's just questions like you folks' concerns to get it out in the air and understand it all. And it's been a pleasure working with you. You're a lot of good people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cronin. Anything else? All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
All right, and then a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Happy holidays to you all. See you next, see you next year.